So it is June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. The meeting of the West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals. I want to let everyone know, both online and in person, that this meeting is being recorded. So just, just, just to make that clear at the top. Let's see, in addition to that, tonight, at the top of the meeting, we have, we currently have four board members attending the meeting. First remotely, we have Mr. John Benson. And then here at Town Hall, we have Chris Mitchell. Everybody knows Raj, Raj Barer, Rajesh Kumar, and myself, Chris Olson. So these are the, the four members that will at least be handling the first topic on the agenda, which is the last month's meeting minutes for May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Yes, you have a question?
Excuse me, Mr. Olson. What are the board members missing from the meeting? Just for record.
Uh, yes, so full member, Mr. Dave Femia is, is not here this evening.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, actually, well, I take that back.
I want to put it on record.
Another full member, Nate Orsiani.
Okay, so two members are missing.
Full, full members.
Full board members.
Yeah.
Two full board members missing.
Correct.
And we're gonna miss their vote on this.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, no, uh, can I, okay, can I ask you?
Go ahead.
So, uh, let me go back to one of the things. So this is the Shrine Ave matter, right? So originally, who are all the Shrine Ave matter, uh, members? Who sat, sat on the Shrine Ave? That's what I'm, I'm trying to get to.
Uh, so it was.
Orsiani.
Everyone here except for Chris.
Yeah, I did not.
And Nate, and Dave.
Orsiani, I have it here. Orsiani, Benson, Femia, me, and you.
Right.
So there are two members are missing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So is there a motion regarding the minutes for, for me?
Prior to that.
All right, one last question.
I'd like to know why the other two board members are not attended this?
Uh, that's, uh, not an issue for, for public discourse.
So we, we don't know, you know? So some, some family.
I will say this, they reached out to me, uh, just before the meeting.
The seatbelt on.
And they had what I would consider to be.
Oh, hold on. David Femia is here.
Oh, there we go.
Uh, Dave?
Hi, Dave.
I'm in the car driving to New York.
So can you stop the car for, uh, like, a ten minutes?
Nope.
Just for the first meeting?
No, I can't do that.
That's all right.
So then you need to get out.
Well, I don't think he's driving. I think he's in the passenger seat.
Right, I'm in the passenger seat.
Are you going to participate in this meeting?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to be involved in this meeting? This is a zero Shrine Ave new.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be here for the whole meeting.
Okay. So in that case, you are, okay.
All right, so we have a fifth board member.
Four member. Four original members, and.
For the Zero Shrine Ave. Yeah, let's get to that. Let's move on, because I want to make some progress here. Uh, is there a motion around vis-à-vis the minutes for May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
There is a motion. Motion to accept? Okay, is there a second?
You can do the second.
Second.
I'll, okay. Whoever wants a second.
Okay, we've got a motion. Let me take notes here. Raj made the motion for the minutes. And Chris seconded. Any comments on the minutes before voting?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we will do a voice call vote. Dave, your vote for approving the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. John, your vote for approving the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Raj?
Mine is yes?
And mine is yes as well. It's five to zero. The minutes are approved. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for Zero Shrine Ave, Lot One R. Petition for variance pursuant to zoning bylaws, section six point two F. Is there someone representing? Please feel free to come forward and, uh, and take your seat there.
Joey Evangelista, one forty-five Prescott Street. I'm one of the applicants.
Excellent, okay. And as I noted, this is a continued public hearing. It's not a new public hearing, but it's a continuation of the previous one. And.
And we're here to request that we, we have, um, without prejudice, discontinued the, the application. Is that proper language?
So you asking to withdraw?
Withdraw without prejudice.
Petition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Petition for variance, but that okay.
Yeah. Petition for the variance. Are there questions or comments from board, from board members? Dave, sounds like you have something.
Yeah, I just want to know what, what's the reasoning for, for dropping this?
Because we, we gotta know, we gotta, uh, vote, vote to, for us to, the zone free, so we're allowed to build in the thirty-foot, our driveway in the thirty-foot area under the special permit. So there's no need for the variance at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments from board members? Okay, we do still have an open public hearing. So if there are any questions on, let's say, the, the substance of the petition, we should talk about them now. If folks are comfortable giving the action that the board took at the last meeting, if folks are comfortable favorably considering the withdrawal, then what I would do is, um, suggest that we first close the public hearing, and then we can vote on.
Do we get, need to get the comments from the?
Uh, yeah, we, we can do that. I, I just want to set forth sort of the, the path forward here. So we do still have an open public hearing. Before we can vote on withdrawing, I would like to, you know, close the public hearing. Um, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, we do still have an open public hearing. Are there any public comments at this time regarding the petition for Zero Shrine Ave?
Of course.
Okay. Um, so what I would ask then, please state your name and your address, and then you can go ahead with your comments.
I'm in Zoning, seventy-fourth circle.
Okay.
I have a discrepancy here. With a twenty-four foot right-of-way, twelve-foot each way, you're gonna have berms, sidewalk, and you're gonna have a utility pole in the way. It's gonna put you over thirty feet by about six inches. A variance is gonna be needed to put that right-of-way in. Done my research. I know exactly what needs to be done. You need a twenty-four foot right-of-way. You need a curb. You need a sidewalk, which is ADA compliant.
It's not with.
And are you done interrupting, Mr. Evangelista?
Please, please.
Hey, I have the floor, sir.
Please, keep the language through me.
Okay.
Address me only.
As long as he doesn't interrupt.
Nobody will, will interrupt anybody else.
With a utility pole that could be placed out on the curb, which he needs, it's gonna put him at thirty-one feet, six inches. I just want to put that out there. It's outside the thirty-foot. It's gonna put him outside by six inches. Done my research, I know everything about it. And that's what I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you.
Six inches is what he needs a variance for. And it's gonna have to go through the board, get approved, and. I'm sorry, sit down. Uh. Okay.
Go ahead.
It's gonna encroach on wetlands. It's gonna encroach on wetlands, and we're gonna have to bring Concom back into this if he wants to encroach six inches into wetlands. I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Um, comments from board members? Okay, hearing none. Are there other comments from the public? Yes, go ahead. Please state your name and your address, and go ahead with your comments.
Here in Montville, sixty-one Shrine Ave, corner of Shrine Ave and Cabo Circle.
Okay.
And what I want to know is, uh, have the rules and regulations for the variance for a road changed in the last eighteen years? Because back when this all started, two thousand six, they were denied the variance for the road because they didn't have enough room. Now we're here, they want to proceed, so I just want to know if the rules have changed.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think the rules have changed.
Rules have not changed.
What I do want to make clear is, so what's before this board tonight and what isn't before this board tonight? Okay, what's before this board is, we're having a continued public hearing on a variance request. That is now, uh, the, the petitioner has now requested to withdraw his request. So he's not asking tonight for any zoning relief of any kind.
Okay, so you're saying that the, uh, the variance rules have not changed? They're still the same as they were?
Not to my, I mean, variance, strictly speaking, variance rules are determined by state law, not by sort of zoning bylaws.
I just want to make sure.
That's my understanding. Go ahead, Raj.
So nothing changed? Nothing on the variance rules changed?
Okay.
Okay. Other comments from members of the public? Go ahead.
What do you need, sixty-three Shrine Ave?
Yep.
So Joe is withdrawing his, uh, request for a variance. And his reason being that he doesn't really need a variance, because he's grandfathered in, basically. Is that what I'm getting at?
So I think what he's referring to is that, um, there was a special permit, I can't remember the year now, when it was originally granted, back in two thousand seven?
It's a good period, yeah.
Two thousand eight, something like that?
That's a lot of good for a year, usually.
Understood. That, that's, that's already been litigated and cleared with, uh, with town council. So that issue is, is now done. There was, there was an appeal period. There is an appeal period, um, related to the administrative appeal that was heard on that issue. Um, as to whether there is or there isn't, uh, sort of an appeal that's filed based on that decision, that's, uh, that's up to, to each individual, um, person as to whether or not that happens. But I just, I, I want to be clear here tonight, that given that, that he's asking now to withdraw, he's not asking for, 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 um, any zoning relief from this board tonight. So there's, there, there's no basis for us to ask him to do something different than, than, than what he's already been, uh, granted by this board back whenever it was, fourteen years ago, fifteen years ago. Um, are there other, do you, do you have further comments, sir?
I mean, I have, I have a lot of safety concerns regarding that particular street, Shrine Ave and Cabo Circle.
Yeah.
The other streets that, you know, are surrounded. As far as, uh, uh, you know, West Boston Police Department.
Yeah.
Can't, um, can't enforce anything on that road, which I've sent them videos of people going fifty miles an hour down that road, people almost getting killed. There's a deer crossing right where he wants to build the driveway, which I took pictures of a deer two hours ago coming out that deer crossing where the driveway is going into the new condos or whatever. I just have a wicked safety concern. Like I said, that West Boston Police will not do a thing. I've sent them videos and stuff, and they said they'll set up right.
What do you think?
And they refused to. There's no stop signs on any of the streets, including Cabo Circle.
Yeah, understood.
Will come right through the streets. I have videos on my dash cam of people almost hitting me coming down that hill going thirty miles, forty miles an hour. So there's no, there's no, you know, safety is a big concern there.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just speaking for myself, I don't think anybody on this board is, is disagreeing with, with anything that you've just said or that anybody else has said here tonight.
Respect to the chief, I'm not talking to the police.
I don't disagree with any of that. But this board sort of only has limited jurisdiction, limited authority. Um, and it doesn't extend to things like traffic safety and, and those, when particularly in an instance where zoning relief isn't being requested. So I understand your concern. There are other avenues to address those. You put your finger on one of them. One is, one is the police department. We don't have control over that. Um, there are others. You know, the building inspector is still going to be involved. The building department here is gonna be involved, because this is involving putting a new structure, uh, uh, on, on that property. So it's not as if there will no longer be other avenues, um, for you to contact and, and, and speak to sort of local on, on some of these issues. Uh, but just for, for this board, I'm trying to make sure that we stay focused on what we actually have a, you know, authority to deal with here.
Right, and the other question I have is like, how long is this gonna go on?
It's spot.
I mean, I'm sixty-four, and Joe's probably above my age. And it's like, we're gonna be eighty-four years old, come to meetings here, like, get variances or whatever, to get this done? You know, like, I just, it's unbelievable how long it takes.
Uh, this is, uh, this is democracy at work.
I understand that. It's like, it's taking a long, uh.
One second.
Go ahead.
Perhaps, you know, you could explain what happened in the last meeting? So what we voted on it, last meeting, based on the town council's advice?
Yes.
So what, what we are going to do today, based on, uh, you know, this, this process? Maybe you could explain it to them, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. So, and we had, I want to say, three different evenings. The, the, the public hearing that dealt with the administrative appeal on this issue. Um, I think it, it was held over a three-month period, so there were three public hearings. I know people who are here tonight, I think, attended one, one or several of those. Um, and basically, the question there was, what was the effect of the original special permit that was granted back in the, you know, the late two thousand and aughts, whatever it was, oh-seven, oh-eight? I, I don't have that in front of me right now. But what was the legal effect of that? And as it turned out, we, we sought legal advice from our town council, and we were told, uh, essentially, that they did the necessary steps that they needed to in order to essentially preserve that old special permit from, from way back when, more than ten years ago now.
Which is, uh, which is, they did build the buildings, the four units, within an year time.
They started that, and they, they had leased one of them, as, as I recall. So the, and, and they had also split the lot pursuant to the, the original special permit. So we were asking the question legally, is that their, their right to preserve their ability to build this second multifamily unit? And the legal answer that we received from town council was yes. Okay? So the, so their appeal was granted last month at the last hearing. Uh, and now all that's left is the petition for the variance, which is now requested to be withdrawn.
Without prejudice.
Uh, without prejudice. Thank you for that. So, um, so sort of, that's where we are. Um, again, I, I do want to stress, it's not as if, if this board chooses to withdraw the petition tonight, it is not as if you no longer have outlets to, to seek within the town. Um, there, I mean, obviously, the still, the Town Hall's gonna be here, the building department's gonna be here, the police department, fire, they're all still going to be here. They are all aware of this project. They have all received all the, the paperwork, uh, that was related to this, just as we have. So all these departments and more are aware of this. The Board of Health is aware. The Conservation Commission is aware. So there are still avenues.
Why does it come down to night where he withdraws the petition without prejudice?
So the re.
Yet, we weren't told of this, and.
Told to.
Why did he apply for a, a petition for a variance?
So that's a legal determination evidently that his council made. I mean, there are any number of ways, uh, that, that you can seek zoning relief as a landowner.
But he doesn't, he doesn't need it. That's why he's dropping the petition for a variance.
But we've just found out now.
Found out what?
It's inconvenient.
Found out what now?
That he's dropping that. Just found out now, as we were walking up the stairs, that he's dropping the variance.
Yeah, we, we, we've all just, just heard that now, that there's, there's nothing.
No, but why, what's the reason why the, your petition for variance was dropped?
You can always, you can always drop a, a zoning relief request at any time.
Without letting us know.
What's the reason why the petition for variance was dropped?
He, he, he already stated that.
Right, I need to hear that again, too.
It's a little, so, look, I, I really want.
I'm just here to, to request that, that the petition be dismissed without prejudice.
So let, let me just, let me just rewind a little bit, because I, I really want to nip this in the bud. Okay? Um, again, I understand everybody's frustration. Trust me, I do. I've been in the position of being on the losing side of a, of a zoning decision right next to my house in the past, okay? I understand it's not pleasant. I get it. You have my sympathy. But that doesn't change the fact that we have to follow the law in any case that comes before this board. And that's what this board has done. If you were at the previous hearings, you would acknowledge that what this board decided last meeting was we decided to follow the advice of town council and to grant the administrative appeal that was requested. Okay? So now, just briefly, what was, what's been before this board for the last three months was the, the petitioner requested two types of zoning relief. One was at administrative appeal, originally because the building inspect, excuse me, because the building inspector denied him a building permit. Okay? And that decision was appealed, hence the administrative appeal that we've been dealing with the last three months. Okay? And then, in addition to filing that administrative appeal, he also filed a petition for a variance. Okay? There, there's nothing improper about that. There's nothing, um, there, there's, there's no sort of legal issue, uh, that, that arises. Any landowner is, is free to, to sort of seek zoning relief in any way that they see fit or their attorney sees fit. Okay? So that's what's happened, uh, in, in this instance. Substantially, I think the reason, and, and he just mentioned it effectively, the reason why I think he's withdrawing the variance tonight is because he no longer needs it, because the appeal was granted. So now the building inspector, um, is, uh, is going to be issuing that building permit that he had previously not allowed. Uh, that's where we are, and it's because, it's not because this board wants this building there or, or anything like that. It's because under the law, the special permit from way back when in two thousand eight has that legal effect, that they are still allowed to build what they proposed to build all the way back in two thousand and eight. That's sort of the, the summary of how we got to where we are tonight.
And they did split up the land to build the.
That was way back in two thousand and eight.
Split the land that didn't affect the new, they left all the land, the variances.
Well, when they split the land, that was, again, pursuant to the original special permit. So they had, they had subdivided the original one large lot into the now two existing lots, uh, pursuant to that special permit. And that was perfected according to our town council, uh, when, when they went through the A and R process with the planning board back in whatever it was, two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
To add on to that, there is a twenty-day appeals period. So based on the, for our, uh, uh.
Special permit decision.
Special permit.
It ended today.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Appeal. I'm sorry.
It ended today.
Yeah, so we came to know, you know, there was no.
No appeal.
No one contested on that.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. So, 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 so that's where we are. Are there any last questions? And hopefully, it's, we're, if, if there are comments that we're covering new ground here?
Yes, my hand's been up for about thirty, thirty minutes.
Go ahead.
The building inspector, that we spoke about previously, still in, same building inspector that's still in office now?
Yes.
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 Oh, it was George?
Hundred percent.
No.
No.
It was not, it was not the previous building inspector. It was the current building inspector who made that original zoning decision.
It was George, I thought, that did the original.
It wasn't.
Never acted on it.
It was not. He may have received.
Seven years ago?
No, no, this was earlier this year.
Oh. I'm talking about the previous one we were talking about.
From two thousand eight, two thousand?
Yes.
Two thousand six.
Different building inspector.
That wasn't a building inspector decision. That was a zoning board decision for a special permit. Uh, nobody was on the board today.
No, I'm not on the board back then.
So that was made by five other.
Different board.
Town residents, set of town residents from, what, sixteen years ago, whenever it was. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
Okay. Any other la, uh, last comments from the public? Yes, go ahead. State your name and your address.
We're having a great look at Cabo Circle.
Yeah.
On the record.
Yeah.
Well, you've been fighting this for a long time.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like anybody cares about what people in the, in that area say.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody cares. We have gone to every meeting we've had. We've gone to Concom. We've gone to everything we possibly can to tell you, this is a very dangerous thing that you're allowing.
Mm-hmm.
And that people are gonna get hurt here, and it's not a good thing at all. He's got a condo there already. That big road going in there is gonna be such a cluster right there. That road he's putting in. And wasn't it convenient that when he did his, his, uh, appeal or a special permit, that your board, not you, but the board then, didn't put a date on that? If they had put a date on that, we wouldn't even be here today. That bothers me. You guys gotta get, make sure you put dates on things. That's not fair to us, because that's screwing us right now. So he gets his permit because he knows how to slip through all these things. So he gets that, and here we are. And now he's denying the, you know, he knows exactly, today is the last day. We can't even appeal it, because today's the last day. Isn't that convenient that you guys put the date in, the day that it, we can't appeal it? It's just one thing after another with this guy. He has every loophole in the world, and you guys let him do it. On the record, that's all. That's all I want to say. I'm so sick of it. I've been doing it for freaking six years. I don't like to talk about how we feel. Why do you have these meetings?
So Lynn, there is nothing, nothing connected with the special, uh, the building inspector, uh, appeal, the last decision we made, and also the variance. You could have made the, we had twenty days. It's not like we made one day for an appeal period. Twenty day, you know it very well. You know it. You are, you are in the, Lynn, you are in the town clerk's office. You know there is a twenty-day appeal period. You could have, you, you could have made an appeal on that.
I should have, I should have.
Yeah, you could have made it. You know, you know what is going on. You know what's going on, you know? There is a twenty-day appeal period. It's not like.
It's been spread and all, and.
No, no, what I'm saying, can I?
I don't know when the dates overlap.
No, can I say that, you know, that decision is different? This one is different. No, can I say that, you know, that decision is different, this one is different, this is for the variant, that one is for the building inspector's administrative appeal. Administerate appeal, ba-- basically, you know, the building inspector said, because of the, uh, uh, variance which they received two thousand eight, is it valid or not? Based on the, based on the town council's advice, based on the power hearings, we made a, the board made a decision to, you know, to deny the building inspector's, uh, uh, denial, right? So that, somebody might have been, you know, you know it very well, you could have, you could have said then, uh, appealed it. So, or, you know, there are other avenues, you know, maybe you can, I don't know how to say this, there are other avenues you can take.
Oh, really, well, what can we do to fight this that we haven't already done? What can we possibly do now to fight this? We've been doing it for six years. What can we do now?
Please give legal advice from--
We can't do, oh--
This isn't a legal issue.
So I have to call a lawyer?
We can't give legal, well, we can't, we're, we're not sitting here as--
I'm just asking you, 'cause you're the people I come to for help. I've been coming to you guys for help for five years, and I'm not getting any, nothing. It's building, and there's nothing I can do about it, except move. That's what I guess I have to do. Great.
I sympathize.
Thank you, guys.
Maybe we should adjourn the meeting, 'cause Joe's getting a little upset out there, so--
I'm not upset.
Joe's, Joe's just sighing and everything else.
I want to get home to dinner.
I thank everybody for your comments, um, I do appreciate your, your openness, uh, and your willingness to, to come to the board, and, and, you know, and explain to us, um, what your, what your feelings and your thoughts are, I do appreciate that.
What about, like, when he builds? I mean, are we gonna have any trees left? Are there gonna be, is there gonna be anything if he decides he's gonna just take everything down, put up this huge rope, put up lots up, that we can't handle in our area? Who do we go to?
You're free to ask him those questions anytime--
More than having you with anybody at any time to go over screening and things like that, for sure.
And you're also free to, to, to go to the building department and ask those questions, you're entitled to those answers--
Sure.
Uh, from, from, from the, the building department, or from him, if you ask, um, I'm sure you'll get some information there, so--
Information doesn't do any good.
Well, again, this is something where the wheels were set in motion more than fifteen years ago, so our issue, effectively, this, there's only so much we can do. That's, that's the hard truth here. And, again, I understand the frustration, uh, but this is the system that we have to work within, this, this is, this is what we have.
Can I just clarify the thirty foot that gentleman had about--
Briefly.
Okay. So it's not the width of the road, it's a thirty feet, it's the length, it's the area between the road, the residential zoned area, so it's, it's a, it's a length thing and not a width thing. You can use thirty feet, when we got the special permit, you were allowed to use thirty feet of the residential zone, and that's a length thing, anywhere in that thirty feet you can construct your driveway.
Okay.
But in the spring, they, they changed the zoning, to say you couldn't use thirty feet anymore.
Right.
But our special permit locked us in, it zone-freezed at the time we got the special permit.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, and so with that, are there, uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
There's a question. So with your thirty feet--
Through, through the chair, please.
With his thirty feet, that he was previously allowed to have, is this still subsequent? Is this something that you guys approved?
The thirty feet buffer that you're referring to, that has to do with the zoning district--
Split lots.
Which you guys occupy, because you are the zoning board of appeals, correct? Am I right or not?
What, what--
Am I right or wrong?
What we are--
He needs thirty feet.
He has thirty feet.
He needs thirty feet, six inches, which he does not have.
Not a width.
If anybody, if anybody were to look at the plans, if there were a set of blueprints here, and you look at the width, he needs thirty feet, six inches, because there has to be a riser pole at the end of his lot, to bring utilities into the district. Thirty feet, six inches. He does not have thirty feet, six inches. Done my research, and I don't know if anybody here has seen the set of prints, or seen anything that goes along with this. In order to put a roadway in, he needs twenty-four feet of curve, four feet of sidewalk, which already puts you, do them out, and then a riser pole somewhere in between that does not inhibit the American Disability Act for a four-foot access for somebody to come down that sidewalk with a wheelchair. He cannot put a utility pole, a riser pole, in the sidewalk.
It's a driveway, not a road.
So--
You need a sidewalk on the side, sir.
Just a couple of things, just a couple of things, please, through me.
Yes, you--
At this board address--
Excuse me, Chairman.
No, excuse me.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Excuse me.
Can you tell him--
I will talk right now.
Can you tell him to speak through you as well?
You will sit down.
Can you tell him to speak through you as well, instead of speaking directly to me?
Do you want me to call the police chief?
Go ahead. He needs to speak--
No, you're gonna talk--
He needs to speak through you, as I do. He can speak to me and not get, all right, go on.
That's it.
Go on, sir.
We're done.
We're done.
We're not done.
We're done.
I had a question on the floor.
Done.
I had a question on the floor, Mr. O'Connell.
Are we gonna close the public hearing?
We are so patient, you know, we, we did allow you many questions, you know--
I had a question--
Yeah.
And Mr. Evangelista spoke to me directly, but I'm not allowed to speak to him directly?
We will, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it, thank you.
You're gonna take that up with him on the sidebar? I appreciate that, thank you, thank you for your time.
So, talk through the chair.
No problem.
Thank you.
There is no sidebar here. It's a open meeting, everyone is watching, video is recording, we are not doing any sidebar. It's the same rule for you, same rule for everyone, talk through the chairman.
Thank you, that's all I was asking.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second?
We'll do a voice vote. Uh, Dave, your vote to close the public hearing? Can't hear you, Dave. Can you unmute your, uh, your line?
Oh, I'm gonna vote yes, but I wanna make a comment before dispose of the action altogether.
Okay. John, your vote, sir?
Yes, to close.
Chris, your vote?
Yes.
Oh, you have this, yes, to close the public hearing.
Five zero. The hearing--
The public--
Public hearing is closed. Dave, you had a comment to make?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Evangelista, if that's possible?
Quickly, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just wondering if Mr. Evangelista, before you started any construction, would you be willing to sit down with the partners and discuss the landscaping? Like what, their concerns about tearing down certain trees and stuff? So I'm just wondering if you guys could, you know, sit down and come to some kind of compromise?
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Dave?
Okay. No, that's it, I, I got my answer then. Thank you, Mr. Evangelista, I appreciate that.
Enjoy New York.
Okay. Do we have, uh, is there a motion to vote on the, uh, withdraw with prejudice?
Somewhat.
Get a variance to kill all the debt.
Okay.
Special seconds, you--
We have a motion and a second to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote again. Dave, your vote to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes!
Okay. John, your vote to withdraw?
Yes, yes.
Chris, your vote?
My vote is yes.
And my vote is yes, it's five zero, the, the petition for variance is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you, Mr. Evangelista, thank you everyone for coming this evening. Seven thirty.
Runway.
Moving on. We have, now we have a continued public hearing for--
Sorry, guys.
--one along our Hartwell Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm good, how are you tonight? Good. Uh, for the record, my name is Heather Dudko, twenty-seven Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass, and I work with the sign installer, Sign Effects.
Scott Hardy, I'm the director of corporate facilities for the Coffin Companies.
As you're aware, this is a, this is a continued hearing from last month. By the way, I do want to acknowledge that we did receive your, uh, your email earlier in the week about, you know, that the, the sort of the--
The mock-up, yep.
Mock, is that what you call a mock-up?
Yep.
Full board.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
We do not have--
Oh, God.
I'm not the chair, sorry.
Well, actually, we do have two remote, so, we do have five.
Where is the five?
Between Dave--
I participated in the last--
We have five.
Does that work?
But we need to make sure Dave is going to be there.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm here!
Excellent, so, so we're all set.
Okay. So, um, I, I, I hope that everyone did have a chance to look at the banner that was put up, so that, that gives a representation of the size, but it will look a little different since the lettering will be, will not have a background, the let, the lettering will just be on the building.
Yeah.
So, did everyone have a chance to see it?
This is the original size you requested on the application?
Yes, yep, yep.
Yeah, so--
I have.
That was helpful.
Okay, great.
I did get a chance to see it.
I did too, I drove by there today.
Not that one.
And I know pictures were taken, uh, by one of the board members, and they were shared with the entire board, so--
Okay.
Even if there's, uh, a case that, that a board member didn't get to see it in person,
okay.
We've got, we've got pictures.
So with that, we ju-- we just would reiterate that we just feel that that's an appropriate size for that building.
Yeah.
Um, two twenty-six is the square footage, as I said, you would not have the, the border around it, as the banner is there now, it would just be the lettering, just that lettering flush against the building above the entrance. It looked like the banner was a little offset a little bit, the lettering will be right over the entrance.
Okay.
Um, so, we just, we would just reiterate that, um, due to the size of the building, the setback of the building, the orientation of the building, that the, the request for that size sign, um, is appropriate.
For the record, can you say, uh, can you tell the, you know, for, for the record, as well as for the public, can you say how big the, uh--
Two hundred and twenty-six square foot. And then, just as a reminder, there's the second sign on the left side of the building that says six K, that's the second sign, there was no issue, I believe, with the board with that sign last, last meeting.
The square footage, uh, one again?
Fifty-three?
Fifty-three?
Yeah.
I do have it somewhere.
Yeah, fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
I got some of that minute stuff.
Are there ques-- are there questions from board members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, at the last meeting, um, when it was presented, I, uh, I thought that two hundred and twenty-six square feet was way too big, considering that our bylaw says thirty square feet, so we're asking almost seven times what the bylaw states. First of all, thank you for the email, I did go out and view the, uh, the, the building, and view the sign that was there. Um, when I got close enough, I saw that the sign was huge, I did go back out to the street, out to Hartwell, Hartwell Street, and I still think that the sign is too big, I think that with the view that you have coming down Hartwell Street, you should have no problem seeing that sign. So I'm thinking more of, you're, you're saying it's twenty-two point one six by nine, I'm looking at about, uh, probably eighteen by nine.
Eighteen feet by nine feet, you're saying?
Yep, yep.
So approximately a hundred and seventy-five square feet, somewhere in there?
Yep, yep. 'Cause there's a perfect view from, from, I, I got at the end of Hartwell Street, right out, right before I got to Cogm-- Cogmatics, and I was looking at the sign, and I said, I thought that even if the sign was smaller, people would still be able to see it. As a matter of fact, the one thing that I did notice about Cog, Cog, Cogmatics, is that they have a sign right on Hartwell, right on the street, and then they have a sign that's right on, on the front of the building, and it's only like twenty or thirty feet, they're only twenty, thirty feet from each other, so definitely, nobody's gonna miss that.
We were just--
So I think that two, I still think that two hundred and twenty-six is too big.
Other comments from, from other board members?
So can you, can I ask that question?
Yeah, please.
So this two hundred and twenty-six is, uh, what is the length and what is the width?
So it's a hundred and eight inches--
One, hold on, a hundred and eight?
One oh eight by three oh two.
Three oh two.
Does that come to, I hope that comes to two twenty-six.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's pins in here.
Yeah.
Again, we have to take--
It has it in inches, is what I remember.
Right, correct.
We do have to take into consideration that that background is not gonna be there, it's just gonna be the letters.
Right. So, one oh eight, it's nine, it's nine foot tall, the three lines of text, nine feet overall height. It's on this, this page right here, the, all the dimensions are on this page.
I know, I saw it.
Mr. Chair, this page.
Oh, thank you.
Has all the dimensions.
Right here.
So nine foot overall height, the three lines of text.
Three hundred and two inches.
Twenty-five point one foot--
Eight inches.
--width.
Thank you.
So this is three oh two?
Okay.
And, uh, this, the, all this letter, one oh eight.
So what do he say, nine by what?
Nine by eighteen.
And the three different letters, this is forty-two, this is thirty, this is nine.
Okay.
You have to show it.
Spot there.
We have to read.
Yeah.
Reformative?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yep. I think I would just like to just reiterate again, the building is not parallel with Hartwell Ave, so there's no opportunity for any kind of ground sign to enter that lot, it's a rear lot, the building is perpendicular to Hartwell, and it's not viewed directly, parallel on Hartwell Avenue.
Yeah.
And that just gives, that's the basis for the size, is the orientation of the building, the approaching of the building, the setback of the building, and the size of the facade.
So, I, I do have another question, what kind of signs will be there? Is this a illuminating sign?
Correct, they're facelit illuminated channel letters.
Is the color?
Black.
Black color, black and white?
Black.
What do you mean by black?
They're black lettering, it's black lettering, illuminated.
Black letter, white background.
No, they're, they're--
No, they're--
No.
Actually.
Oh, they're blue?
Yeah, they should be blue.
They'll be blue.
It's a blue color.
They'll be blue, on the white building, the building is white. And as, as we said, when you view the, the mock-up that's there now, it's a banner, so you see the perimeter of the banner. These will be flush-mounted individual channel letters on the building.
One lane.
So you will not see visually a border around it, it's just the lettering.
And I can say--
I'm sorry? Just like the UMass.
Oh. And I can say, so when I drove up, um, it's coming from, what is it, Truesbury Street, driving on Hartwell?
Yep.
Was looking, I, I know sort of where the building is, I'm looking at it, I couldn't see it at all--
Correct.
Past the buildings, and I think there were some trees there as well, blocking it. And then, you drive past those, and then you can see sort of, at, at a certain point, you can see the building that, that sort of does abut Hartwell, but you can't see the, the building that you're referring to here.
Right.
I couldn't see the sign, as, as it's up now, literally, until after I drove onto the property.
Right.
That was the first point at which I could see it.
Yep.
So, for me, um, it doesn't seem to be, um, you know, like it's, it, it's detrimental at all to--
An apple.
To, to, to the area that, that's going on there. Again, I couldn't see it until, until I drove on, I mean, onto the property, but if, if other folks on the board have comments, please feel free. Now, John, if you have a comment, uh, feel free.
You are muted, John.
Uh, there we go, I think I unmuted myself that time. No, um, I, I looked at the stuff that was provided, and I, Chris, I think I'm echoing what you say, I think a significant piece of this for me is the area that it's in, I mean, this is an industrial area, so I, I, that factors heavily into how I view this issue. I'm not sure if that's what you were getting at in your comments, that's how I interpreted it, Chris.
No, I, I think you're, you're right on, you, you stated it better than I did, so thank you for that.
Um, I, I, I tend to agree in, in that when I look at that area, industrial part of town, uh, the sign itself, that I don't see, doesn't, I, I don't, doesn't like stick out like a sore thumb, uh, and then with the unique nature of that building, like where it's located off of the, from the street, I--
Yeah.
When, when looking at it all, it doesn't, eh, yeah, I don't, it doesn't bother me, I, when, when looking at it all, it doesn't, yeah, I don't, it doesn't bother me, like when I look at it, I, yeah, it's just my opinion.
For me, you know, for some reason, you know, I did not get the email from the secretary.
You did not?
No, but, 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 I did go see the site. I took several pictures, and I did send it to the chair, because I cannot send it to the entire board. So I did send it to the chair. I think my impression are, the way I look at it, when I, when I took the picture from the road, or from that entrance of the road, it was very, 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 very small sign. So yes, when I go near the sign, when I go near the, the two-car parket, the, in front of the building, the car, one line and the second line, it was humongous. So it was big. And also, when I took the picture from the other cog- cogsmatics building, it was okay. But when I go to the road, it's very smaller sign. So my feeling is, you know, again, it doesn't bother anybody, I don't think so it would be a, you know, so my feeling is, it's not going to affect anything.
Okay.
I could say at first, this, like when I, when I hear about the size of the sign, it sounds very big, but like, like you've mentioned, when I, when we compare it against the relative size of the building in the area, it's, and it's, okay, it doesn't, it, you know, and then the mock-ups here help, it even shows it and how it on there. Like maybe if, if, if it was, let's say, on some, on some, at some small place in West Boylston Street, that would be a different story, I'd think, whoa, this seems like sticking out. Then if it's illuminated and all that, but that area, yeah, and all the, all the factors that we, when I look at it, it seems okay to me.
And I, I, I just want to point out too, that the two twenty-six is an entire rectangle around the sign. That's the ultimate dimension of the sign. If you were to break it down, the coffin is eighty-nine square foot, the company's is sixty-four square foot, and the tagline is nineteen square foot, which totals one seventy-two. So we did give an extreme measurement at two twenty-six. But if you were to break it down to the three components, it's about one seventy-two.
Okay.
If that helps.
Which is actually close to what Dave was mentioning earlier, about one seventy-five.
Dave?
Yep?
So if you take up only, only the si- only the lettering, it comes to one seventy-five.
Or one seventy-two, I think.
One seventy-two.
Yeah, just the lettering.
Now, if you make a square around all those lettering, it is two twenty-six. But when, only when you take, only when you take the-
The three different ones?
The three components.
Three components, you know. One is forty-two point three four inches. The second line company is thirty point five three inches. The commercialization reimagined is nine point zero two inches. And the length is three hundred and two inches, which is going, which gives you approximately one seventy-five.
Two.
One seventy-two.
Okay. We can go to the public. Yeah, are there public comments on this? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Steve McReddician, one twenty-seven Hartwell Street, West Boylston, Mass. I'm the landlord of the building at one oh one R. Hartwell. And I happened to do a drive-around today and just reference some other buildings in town. And the FedEx Building on Century Drive in town, I happened to take a picture of that sign. And relative to the scale, the size of the sign, relative to the sign-
But that is in Worcester, right? It's in Worcester, right?
I think that's West Boylston.
On the other side is Worcester side, I guess.
I think when you get close to the street, it's missed.
It's in a weird spot.
When you pass, um, the new, what is it, the new Boy Scouts, Girl Scout building on the left, and then the Red Cross building in front of you, the FedEx Building is behind that building. That's definitely in West Boylston. So, um, I didn't get access to inside the building, I didn't talk to anyone inside. The facility was locked, so this is a remote picture. But looking at the scale, from the size of the door, it's an eight-foot door. I would say that FedEx sign is probably twice the width of an eight-foot door, so it's probably sixteen feet wide. And I estimate it's probably, that's probably a ten-foot door, so it's probably five feet high. So if I do some quick math, sixteen by five, I mean, that's, that's over eighty feet. That's just the lettering, but I just want to reference that this particular building, this particular sign, is also an example of a sign that's outside the current regulations developed by the limitations of size. So just an FYI. There are other signs larger than what the sign ordinance in town. There are other signs on all the buildings in town with larger signs.
Okay.
Just an FYI.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Other questions, comments from board members on this?
I have motion to close the public hearing, is that the one?
Yeah, as long as there's no further questions from, from board members, I'm, I'm comfortable closing the, the public hearing at this point.
John?
It sounds like, um, it sounds like we're there, so. That being the case, then I'll entertain-
You want to check in with John?
I think he's our, John, did you have a comment, I'm sorry?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
Okay, motion to close the public, uh, pub- public hearing?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Just make a note of this. Okay, so we will do a voice vote on whether to close the public hearing for the variance at one oh one R. Hartwell Street. And this is, it's the hearing for both signs that we've talked about, both last meeting and this one. So that being the case, Dave, I'll go to you, your vote to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, John, your vote to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
And I mean, yes as well, it's five zero, the public hearing is closed. Any comments from board members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave.
One thing that I have not heard through this whole process is the conditions that are supposed to be met to grant the variance. So I don't know, did they meet all the conditions or not?
Yeah, so I, I was actually just looking at those. And so the first one is around soil condition, shape or topography of the land. And I mean, just given sort of the nature of where the building is, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but given sort of the-
Distance from the road?
The distance from the road, the, the way this, is, is this building on its own separate?
Separate to the lot?
Yes, yes.
It just doesn't have a lot of, all that much frontage on Hartwell?
It doesn't have any frontage.
It doesn't have any frontage.
Okay. So, so again, there, Dave, I, I would argue that that's, I, sort of falls under the shape of the, of the, the particular land at issue here, and sort of, you know, shape and location, let's say, in this case. Then if you're looking at the, the second part of the test, um, let's see. Literal enforcement. Oh, hang on, especially affecting such land or structure, we talked about that, is this being sort of a peculiar problem? That doesn't really sort of apply to, to other, either buildings on Hartwell Ave in, in the zoning, in the industrial zone, or, or on West Boylston Street, as, as also was mentioned. So those are things that sort of especially affect this land, but don't affect the, the general zoning district in which it's located. So I, I think we've also talked about the sort of substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. You know, based on sort of, again, the location of the land and the difficulty in seeing, um-
The business.
In, in seeing the building and, and the entrances.
The somebody be out the business.
Right. And then the third one is, let's see, relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. So I mean, I, I think it's clear here that, I mean, first of all, the variances are allowed in this instance, or in, generally speaking, variances can be allowed. But I think in this particular instance, as we've talked about, given the particular lot, given the lack of frontage on Hartwell, I don't see that there's sort of an issue with, you know, sort of not abiding by, by the current, the, the current zoning bylaw. I know I'm not being particularly clear here, but anybody else on the board want to make comments on this? Catch my breath?
No, you got everything covered.
Any other questions on that, Dave?
No, as long as you, as long as you can assure me that all the, all the criteria has been met, then I don't have a problem.
Okay, I mean, I, I, so I would say this, I think the, the three criteria have been addressed. As to whether they're met, I think it's, I think we, that's what we as a board need to decide. So I mean, I, I won't sort of make that as a pronouncement, but I'll say, I mean, it seems to me there's, there's substantial facts on the record to, to arguably meet each of those prongs of the test, if you will. John, feel free to disagree with me, Chris, Raj, certainly feel free to disagree, but.
No, Chris, I think, I think you have it right, and I think at the, the last, well, last session of this public hearing, the petitioner did lay this out as to their argument, and relative to the topography. And I don't recall if that, if that was provided to us in writing, or if that was just orally made. But they certainly, at the first session of this hearing, I recall them addressing those issues and making their argument based, not simply asking for a variance, but making their argument based on the, um, the criteria for a variance. But I, I don't recall, and I don't see it in front of me, that it was a written-out argument, but it certainly was addressed.
Yeah, and that's my recollection as well. Thank you, John. So if, if there aren't any other questions or comments from board members, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance.
I make a motion to approve the, Heather Hopkins.
Deco?
Deco.
Thank you.
And the D S, D and S Realty LLP, for a variance for the installation of two-wall signs which exceeds the allowable sign area. First one to the zoning bylaw section five point six, C two at Hartwell's, the one oh one R. Hartwell Street. And the sign, the requesting sign, do we need to mention that, the area? Or is this enough?
Yeah, let's go ahead and we'll, we'll add those, just on the record, just to make it clear. So one is two twenty-six, which we were just talking about, and then fifty-three.
Yeah. So the one sign is three zero ten, three hundred and two inches in length, and one oh eight inches in height. And the letter cog- coglin is forty-two point three four inches. And the company's is thirty point five three inches in height. And then the commercialization reimagined is nine point zero two inches, which the, uh, drawing is provided to the zoning board. And also, the second sign is six K, okay?
Yeah.
Let me see that other previous page, this before then.
The second sign dimension is, the second sign is at six K. The length is one one six point one six inch. Height is sixty-five point five two inches. That's my motion.
Okay, that, that was a motion to approve the variance.
Yeah, that was, that was I said.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Thank you. Are there any comments from board members at this time before we vote?
Considering the fact that all the conditions were met that a variance required, my vote would be yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the comment. Hearing no other comments from board members, then we'll go ahead and vote. So Dave, please go ahead and make your vote formally at this time.
Yes, yes.
Okay. John Benson, please go ahead and make your vote.
Yes.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Okay, my vote is yes as well, it's five zero.
Motion carries.
The motion carries, the variance is granted. There will be a written decision to this effect filed with the town clerk within two weeks, within fourteen days.
And also the appeal period.
And then appeal period.
And there's an appeal period after that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Wonderful evening.
You too, thank you.
All right, moving on to the next topic on the agenda. Continued public hearing for special permit for an accessory apartment in a single-family home at three thirty-five Lancaster Street. Mr. Lou, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Pretty good.
Excellent, excellent.
Too hot enough in the past few days, you know.
I think it's supposed to cool off at least a little bit tomorrow, that's what I'm hearing, so. All right, excellent, so let me just recap what happened last month and, and what has progressed since then. So I think you'll recall, at the last meeting, some questions came up, both around input from the Board of Health and input from the building inspector as, as to this project. So as promised, at the last hearing, I reached out to both, and I provided you with their, with the emails and, and with their, their feedback.
Yep.
So just to summarize, my understanding, and by the way, all the board members have those, those emails as well. So all, all five of us have access to that, and I'm sure have, have read it. But just to summarize, the Board of Health did confirm that adding sort of an independent unit above the garage, as, as you were proposing, that that would be something that the existing septic system was sort of designed to handle, and that that, that shouldn't be an issue in this, in this particular instance. Secondly, with regard to the building inspector, the building inspector confirmed that he had been there, that, so he has been on-site, he's looked at sort of, you know, the, the particular rooms that are at issue here for, for the, for the accessory apartment. And he confirmed that, I think, the only other thing that would be needed from his side has to deal with, I think, a little bit of sort of finishing work around, was it the plumbing, I believe, or the electrical? I can't remember what it was.
No, I think he just, so just finished the, the damage of the, of that room, because the water damage, so basically, we have to put the new floors, we have to fix the wall, because they cut certain height of the wall because of the water damage. So I think in the email, he mentioned, I just have to fix the water damage.
Okay, excellent. But at least, so from a zoning perspective, it didn't seem like the building inspector had any additional sort of issues with it on his end. And I just want to read through what the requirements are before we consider voting here. So under an accessory apartment, there's a number of requirements that have to be met. One of which is, and I think you've already submitted to Toby, our secretary, a declaration of covenant.
Yep.
Essentially, it's, it's an affidavit saying that you promised to be living in one of the dwelling units on this special permit, should it be granted, i- is in effect. So I think that is taken care of there. Only one apartment will be created within the single-family dwelling, that, that also is true in this instance. Shall be designed so that the appearance of the building remains that of a one-family residence. You're not proposing to do any exterior changes.
No, no, no.
Right, so, so the building isn't going to look any different-
It will be exactly the same.
-once you're done from, from what it is now. Okay, and then it talks about accessory apartment shall be no greater than seven hundred square feet, nor shall it contain more than one bedroom. I know we talked about that last month, the, the building inspector, I think the number that he gave was closer to three hundred feet, actually, in his email. I wasn't exactly sure where he came up with that number, but it's-
I do remember it was a lot, it seemed a lot, lot less than seven hundred feet.
It's definitely-
Well, I, I got the email.
So let's just, let me just-
Yeah, because actually, I was the last, no, why, because I got a call from a few different contractors, because I, I want to know how much it costs to fix the water damage. And, you know, the, the number they gave to me is definitely less than seven hundred square feet.
Yeah, right here. So he wrote in his email, the square footage is a little over three hundred square feet. So again, that, that seems to be, I mean, he, he's been there. And I know you had mentioned, I think you had mentioned at the previous public hearing, that there was, you had given us, let me see if I can find it here. I think the number was a little bit higher, but it was still within the seven hundred square feet. Let me see if I can find it here quickly.
Yeah. Three thirty-five Lancaster.
Yeah. This, so it, it has a kitchen, it has a bedroom, and it has a bathroom? Is, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Those are the three parts? Okay.
On the egress?
Yes, the egress, I think we talked about, is there a set of stairs behind the building?
Yes, the stairs are like from the back of the house.
Okay, so is that behind the garage?
No, I mean, it's, it's-
Or behind the house?
It, it's, oh, you mean the room, room is actually above the garage.
Yeah, yeah, so the stairs to the garage, or the stairs?
So it's going back from the, from the garage, there's the stairs to that room, and the room is on top of the garage.
Okay. Stairs in the back, okay. Is there a question, Dave, do you have a question? You're muted, Dave.
You have muted.
I'm muted.
As long as the building inspector has been out and has confirmed that, you know, that there's no building code violations or anything, and he's satisfied with, you know, with everything, then, then I'm satisfied too.
Okay.
And just as long as, as long as we, you know, go through all the, the list like you just did, as long as that's all taken care of, then I don't have. Just make sure that the declaration, the covenant, uh, declaration of covenant explains to me, to the, to the petitioner what exactly that means.
Yep, absolutely, certainly will do that. I just want to finish going through the list here. So you're not-
Chris, can I just interrupt you for a second? Okay, I'm at my destination, so I'm going to be stepping out of the car for a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I think we should hold, then.
Can we take a recess?
Yeah, why don't we take a recess at this time, just for, for a couple of minutes?
Doug, can we take a recess?
See, now we're back on. We just need Raj now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we're just waiting for Raj now at this point.
Okay, all right. Thank you for waiting, I appreciate it.
Not at all. We, we're just, uh, just, just one more minute. Oh, here, here we are. It's supposed to rain till later, thanks. All right, uh, I think we're back. Are we back on TV? We're all set there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all set.
Excellent. Dave's back, looks like we're back. All right, thank you. So let me just finish going through this list here, uh, for, for the record. So you're not proposing any new entrances?
No.
To, to, to the, the building?
No, everything will be same.
It's, it's already existed?
Yeah.
Okay. Parking? Um, yeah, I think we talked about that last time. There's, there's plenty of air.
Yeah, plenty of parking, yeah.
A, a couple of parking spaces around there, right? How many acres is the total land approximately?
About twenty acres.
About twenty acres? Thank you for that. Um, oh, three off-street parking spaces, I still don't think that's gonna be a problem, sounds like. Uh, the Board of Health, we've been through that, so I think that's, that's all of them. So to Dave's point earlier, I just did want to make clear, again, I think you've already submitted to Toby that declaration of covenant. Which, again, just to be clear, that means, uh, that you're agreeing that you will live either in sort of the main house or in this new unit.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that effectively, you can't sort of have two other groups of people live there. You, you've got, you've got to be living there.
Yeah, sure.
Um, while this, this special permit is in effect. And also, that this special permit, um, will terminate if and when you choose to sell the house. The special permit does not sort of continue, uh, once title of the house has been transferred to, to a new owner.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, just, just to be clear on that. Are there any other questions from board members on this?
No, just a comment, just a comment.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, on that, on that declaration, declaration, what needs to happen is in a separate form that he has to get signed by Toby. He needs to take that to the registry of deeds and have them stamp it, and then bring it back to Toby, she'll make a copy, and then he keeps a copy for his records.
Yes, thank you for that, Dave. So that's right, so once the special permit, if it's granted, once you have that special permit, you will need to take both the special permit and the declaration of covenant, covenant, and bring those to the Worcester Registry of Deeds, have them recorded. And then you need to bring evidence of that recordal back to this board through Toby, our secretary. That's another requirement. So Dave, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, any other comments from, from board members?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
A second?
Excellent. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments from board members before we vote? Hearing none? All right, so we will do a voice vote. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, is there a motion to approve the special?
No, we need to close, we need to take the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm losing myself. Let's, let's, let's take the voice vote to close the public hearing, I'm sorry. Um, Dave, let's start with you. Your, your, your vote to close the public hearing, it looks like.
He's done.
You may have lost your cell signal. Um, let's, John, what's your vote to, to close the public hearing?
Yes, to close.
Okay. Um, Chris, yours?
Uh, yes, to close.
Okay. Uh, Raj, yours to close?
Yes.
Okay, a yes as well. Dave, what's your mo- what's your vote to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, five zero. The hearing is closed. Any comments from the board before we consider voting on the special?
No.
Nope.
Nothing from Dave, nothing from me? Um, sounds like nothing from John, looks like nothing from John, so.
Okay.
Uh, I'll entertain then a motion.
Motion to approve. You, Liu, for a special permit for an accessory apartment in a single-family home, first one to zoning by law, section three point four at three thirty-five Lancaster Street, the spoils in Mass.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Second!
Okay, great, we got two seconds. It's even better. Wonderful.
Let's give it to Dave.
Yeah, if there's no comments, then we'll go ahead and vote. Dave, what's your vote to appro-
Yes!
To approve? It's a yes. Okay, thank you. John, your mo- your vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Chris, your vote?
Yes.
Mine is yes.
And mine is yes. It's five zero. The special permit is granted.
Thank you.
So what we will do, we'll make a, a written decision, uh, briefly describing, uh, the, uh, the grounds, um, uh, for this decision. That will be filed with the town clerk, uh, within fourteen days, so two weeks from today, that, that will be in there. Then after that, there's a twenty-day appeal period where anyone can potentially appeal the decision that was just made here. Um, once that twenty-day appeal period passes, then at that time, you can take the written decision that you can get from the town clerk and that declaration of covenant, which by then, all the board members should have signed. So we're gonna have to sign that over the next twenty days. And once that's signed, you take those two documents, you have those, uh, recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds, and then you bring us back evidence.
Sure.
Saying that they've been so recorded.
Yep.
Is that, is that clear?
Yes, that's clear.
Excellent.
If you have any questions, you can either ask Toby, uh, to the board.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Happy night.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, hang on, I lost my agenda here.
Chris, just a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, just so that you guys, that the board is aware of, there is a bill before the, uh, in the Commonwealth, it's called the Affordable Housing Bill, and it pertains to accessory dwelling unit, which is a accessory apartment. Right now, it is passed through the House and is on its way to the Senate. Once the Senate approves it, it'll go to the governor, and the governor will sign it. When the governor signs it, accessory dwelling unit or accessory apartment will then become a right. They won't have to come to the CBA for a special permit, they'll just have to go to the building inspector.
Thank you for that update, Dave. I appreciate that. Um, so we, we do have one more issue, uh, we do have reorganization of the board. It's June time, everyone, reorganization of the board, so I, I don't know, uh, what folks are thinking.
Yeah, is there anyone want to step up to the chairman?
Please, please, volunteer.
Can I comment on that?
Not me.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm the newest guy.
Not me, Dave.
Not me.
Can I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we have two LIP projects that are coming to town. They've already been, they've already made an agreement with the Board of Selectmen. I'm suggesting that we leave the organization the way it is until the LIP folk, the both LIP programs are complete and then recome ba- then come back to the, to the reorganization.
Why don't we reorganize today? Is there anything?
No, I'm just saying, that, that's just my opinion. I think that we should leave the board un- the way it is until these two LIP programs are done, and then.
So.
Go back and reorganize the board.
Dave, I have a suggestion, okay? So it is customary to reorganize after the election. So we will reorganize, and, uh, you know, if you want to, uh, you know, my, my, my vote, what I'm thinking is, you know, Chris to be the chair again. And if there is a something, if you are interested to become a chair after the forty B, then we can always ask Chris, hey, you can step down, Chris, it's enough. So Chris will be more than happy to step down at any day. Yes, Chris?
All right, well then, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion for chair, Chris, for vice chair, John.
If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve. I have no interest in having any of those positions.
Yeah. So let's, uh, Dave, what are you going to say, Dave? It's your motion.
Okay, if John, if John doesn't want it, then I'll make Raj the vice chair.
Who?
Raj, the vice chair.
Raj is vice.
And Chris the chair.
Yeah, I'm happy to be a vice chair.
Don't we need a clerk too?
Yeah, you want to be the clerk, Dave?
Nope, I'm be, I'll stay on as clerk.
Okay.
But I don't want the chair. I want Chris to be the chair.
Okay, the, uh, why don't you include your motion to clerk or, or you cannot nominate yourself?
Is that the rule?
I nominate Dave to be chair. I mean, excuse me, to be, to be clerk, excuse me. I nominate Dave to be clerk.
Okay.
I accept.
Okay, okay.
So we have a motion, oh, you, you are the chair, go ahead.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And, and just to be clear, the motion is?
Dave's motion is you to be the chair.
Dave's motion is?
Me to be the vice chair.
Christopher Olson as chair, Raja Raja Kumar as vice chair, and Dave Femia as clerk.
No, uh, that's a John's motion. Dave as a, well, clerk is a John's motion.
Oh, so we're separating these?
We have to separate. Or, you know, we can say it and.
I'm not having a good night here, gentlemen.
No, we can combine the motion, it's okay. John's motion is.
Is that because, hey, Chris, is that because Toby's not there?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I'm not balanced.
Let's take the first, uh, let's take a vote on the first, Dave's motion.
Yes.
Dave's motion is Mr. Olson to be the chair.
Olson for chair.
Raj should be the va- Raj is the vice chair. Let's take a vote on that.
So there's a vote? I'm sorry, there's a motion?
There is a second, I seconded for that motion.
And there's a second.
Okay, let's take the vote. Let's make your life easy.
Dave made the motion, Raj seconded.
Yep.
For chair and vice chair. I'm sorry, I'm taking notes in Toby's absence. Um, all right, so let's do a voice vote for those positions for chair and vice chair. Dave?
Yes.
Okay, John, your vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Raj?
Yes. Yours is yes.
Can I abstain as to one of those two?
No, it's not debatable.
All right, yes. For, for one more blessed year, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, all right.
Let's take that.
So there is a, there is a motion.
On the floor is.
For Dave Femia as clerk.
By John Benson.
By John Benson. Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion too.
Okay.
Yeah. Dave cannot second the motion because he's there.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second for Dave Femia as clerk, who will do a voice vote. Dave, your vote?
Yes.
John, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, your vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes for me, so it's five to zero. We are officially reorganized for the next twelve months. Thank you, everyone, for that. Um, oh, so there, there is another thing. So just so everybody is aware, there are going to be some things that each of us need to sign over the next week, week and a half, one of which is gonna be that declaration of covenant, that I will have Toby leave, um, in, in the, the CBA mailbox. So please be aware of that. Secondly, there's a form here about, uh, we, we, we signed.
This is the form from the accountant.
Yes.
And, uh, every year, it is, uh, you know, the members of the zoning, zoning board, who is the signing authority on the bills? So normally, we, we'll, you know, normally, in other boards, we say, you know, anyone, any one of the board member can sign a bill. Uh, once you get the bills from the town or the BHP, or the Toby brings in the bill from the telegram and gazette, somebody has to sign it. So that, the signing authority, there is a form from the Leslie, town accountant. So, so I will make a motion, any one of the zoning board of appeals member can sign the, can be the signing authority on any of the bills for the year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
I second it.
All right, so we have a motion from Raj, we have a second from Dave. Uh, I'm sure there's no comment on that one. Let's do a voice vote, unless, if there is comment, I'll hear it, but it sounds like.
I guess a question, now, is it, does that include, uh, associate members, or just the full, full board members?
Oh, I don't know that.
I, in the past, it's, it's a great question.
It's only the full members.
In the past, it's been the full members.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, great question, though, great question.
It's only the full members.
Yeah, but that doesn't, but you can still vote on this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So why don't we do the, the vote? We have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a voice vote on exactly that, giving all five full members the authority to sign bills, uh, for the, uh.
Any one of the, any one of the.
Any one of the five full, full members. Excellent. So Dave, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, John, your vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Mine's yes as well, five zero. Um, so any five full members, uh, will be able to, to do exactly that.
And, uh, to, to, for you, administrative thing. And, uh, to, to, for you, administrative thing. So I talked, we had the planning board one. I did bring it to the town accountant. She said, you know, we need to take a vote, and then we need to submit the minutes to the accountant, so, so, showing that, you know. We took it for the two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
And also, we took a vote on, the board approved any one of the members' sign.
Okay.
So those things need to be indicated.
So no, so Toby will, will have to write those reports, and she may actually have to submit those reports with this report before our next meeting.
Yeah. Um, so to be paid, to be paid, any of the bills from July first, she needs it.
Okay, okay. So again, just so everybody's aware, there's gonna be two documents in the CBA mailbox that are gonna need to be signed by everybody here over the next, let's say, the next week. Because we especially need to have, actually, both of these documents signed in the next week or so. Um, and they'll be there, uh, for those of, for the two of you who are remote, I think we can, we can sign what we need to tonight. There's also gonna be, um, vote sheets, actually, for the, for the, um, the votes on the petitions for tonight as well. So if you can stop by over the next week or so and, and sign those, that would be wonderful.
John, you may need to get out of the house. If you need a rider, no, let me know.
Excellent. So, and with that, I'll just mention that, uh, the next regular meeting of the zoning board is July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and if there's nothing else...
Chris, I'm not sure I'm gonna be, uh, around for that meeting.
Okay, good to know. Thank you for that.
Me too, me too.
Okay.
So far, there is no, no, uh, it, no items are there with the things, no, no applications so far.
There is one bubbling under the surface, though.
Oh, okay.
So, so we, we may need to have that meeting.
Okay.
I don't, I won't put you on the spot now.
I should be, I, I think I'll be around. I have something the following week, but that's the twenty-fifth, the eighteenth. I don't think I have anything going on.
Okay, excellent.
Whether here in person or, or by Zoom, if necessary.
Yep, excellent. Wonderful. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Dave?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have a first from Dave, a second from Chris. Uh, let's do a voice vote to adjourn. Dave, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. John, your, John, your vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
I mean, yes as well, five zero. We are adjourned.